Welcome, everybody. We're going to start our regular meeting Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, a little after 7:00 PM. Call to order, Declaration of Quorum, seven members present. Thank you all for being here. Welcome to this meeting of College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We are elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance. We've all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you've taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That will bring us to recognitions. I believe we have the summer day campers here tonight.
This year, we were at Southwood Valley Elementary. And with me today, I have Harper Osk. She is a fourth grader at Creekview Elementary, and this summer she was in our CODA's cabin.
Hi, my name is Kayla Delion. I am an Assistant Speech Language Pathologist at Rock Prairie and Creekview Elementary. And over the summer, I was a site director at Forest Ridge. And so my two campers are Lily Johnson and Owen Johnson.
Good evening and welcome to the CSISD August Board Meeting. Please stand for the National and State Pledges.
Pledge for the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for wisdom, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pledge to the Texas flag. In honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you.
All right, we're going to come take a picture right back here.
Okay. Mr. Horak, members of the board, and distinguished guests here with us tonight, it's an honor as always to recognize the incredible work of our students and staff for their achievements at the state and national levels. This evening, we'll be recognizing the hard work and dedication of our music and art educators for contributing to the district's distinctions and recognitions from state and national organizations. The summer College Station ISD was named one of the National Association of Music Merchants' Best Communities for Music Education for the sixth consecutive year. This designation is a testament to the passion, dedication, and creativity of our music educators, students, and the community that supports it. Their commitment not only nurtures talent but also enriches our schools and strengthens the cultural fabric of our district. CSISD currently has over 5,000 elementary students participating in music classes, over 800 intermediate through high school students in orchestra, 1,100 intermediate through high school students in band, 500 intermediate through high school students in choir, and nearly 700 intermediate students taking general music classes. Mr. Eric Eeks, our Director of Fine Arts, and several of our music teachers from around the district are here with us tonight to be recognized. So if you are here with us this evening, if you'll please stand and come forward so that the board can shake your hand and recognize you, and we will take a group photo with you. Please give a round of applause to our Fine Arts Department. Our Finance Department also had another recognition this summer. CSISD was recognized as a District of Distinction by the Texas Art Education Association for the sixth consecutive year. CSISD received this honor for providing a well-rounded education that advocates and integrates visual arts curriculum to inspire creativity and build social, emotional learning that connects learners to their community and beyond. CSISD is one of 109 districts out of 1,200 that met high standards and will receive this outstanding honor. This places CSISD in the top 8% in art education statewide. We also have some of our art educators here with us this evening, so if you guys would please stand and come forward so we can congratulate and recognize you as well.
I feel like I'm addressing y'all, but we have our back to you, so it's always strange. Mr. Horak, Dr. Harkrider, and distinguished guests, as well as members of the board, I'm Teresa Vindan, the Executive Director of the Education Foundation. And tonight, along with our Board President Gary Brown, we are honored to recognize Daily Company and its owner, Chris Daly, for their incredible commitment to our mission. For the past nine years, Daily Electric-- or sorry, y'all used to be called Daly. Look, it's hard to change that. Daily Company has proudly served as the title sponsor of our employee giving campaign. Their generosity makes it possible to provide the incentives that inspire and thank our employees who support the Education Foundation each year. This evening, we are pleased to present this check for $79,368 to Dr. Harkrider, and this represents half of the funds that are personally donated to the foundation from our teachers and staff, which is very humbling to think that our own staff has done such a great job of supporting the foundation. These contributions will be given back to the schools to be used where they are needed most. On behalf of the Education Foundation, we extend our deepest gratitude to Chris and the Daily Company for their unwavering support and commitment to CSISD students and staff. Thank you. All right, we have one more recognition. I'm going to give Chris a hug first. Thank you. All right. Gary, you can stay up here with me. The Education Foundation is also proud to recognize several students who have gone above and beyond in their volunteer service to Chrissy's Closet, our free clothing closet for our students' employees. If I could have Stephanie, and Mateo, and Nicholas, y'all, go ahead and come on up for us. So I'm going to start with Stephanie. Stephanie Rivas, a freshman at College Station High School generously collected and donated more than 300 boxes of crayons for Chrissy's Closet Back to School Bash. Her contribution was directly-- will directly benefit students in need, and we are honored to celebrate her efforts and the positive impact you have made. So thank you so much for that. We're also here to recognize Nicholas Carrera, this is Nicholas, and his brother Mateo. So Nicholas is a fifth grader at Beacon Trail, and Mateo is a fourth grader at Forest Ridge Elementary. Both of these young men dedicated countless hours over the summer helping sort clothes and shoes and preparing the closet for the start of the school year. In addition to volunteering throughout most of last year, Nicholas graciously used his bilingual skills to help translate for families at the closet. All of these students' thoughtful acts of service are a shining example of compassion, generosity, and the strong community spirit that defines College Station ISD. Thank y'all so much for what you do. Here, let's get a sandwich.
All right, that brings us to item C3, we want to recognize the artwork at the back of our boardroom from our summer day campers. So as you can see, they're very extraordinary students and spent their summer decorating our boardroom, so we appreciate them sharing that with us. Bring us to item C4, we have a Tasby trustee recognition this evening.
Mr. President, fellow trustees, Dr. Harkrider, and, most importantly, members of the College Station ISD community, good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Brian Halliback. I serve on the Board of Trustees at Thrall ISD, also serve on the Tasby Board of Directors, and in addition to that, serve as a Director to the Leadership Tasby Alumni Association Executive Board. And on behalf of the Leadership Tasby Alumni Association and the Texas Association of School Boards, I'm here to recognize a really special accomplishment of one of your own. Tonight, it's my honor to recognize trustee Kimberly McAdams, who officially graduated as a member of Leadership Tasby Class 2025 and earned the distinction of Master Trustee, which is the highest recognition of honor bestowed on the trustee by the Association of School Boards. So to put this in context for you, what this is about is Leadership Tasby is not just traditional continuing education. It's a one-year program, it's a journey through five different sessions scattered throughout the year and around the state, and it pushes individuals outside of that state of personal comfort and into a state of personal growth. As I talk about the different locations and the process, something that is unique about this presentation as opposed to a number of the other ones is College Station was one of the destinations this year. And so there's a number of people in the room who I'm sure had a key role in creating the events that took place here in College Station that make the program so special and challenging and provide that growth for not only Ms. McAdams, but a number of us throughout the state. So thank you to the district and the participation of all those individuals who contributed that. But now back to bragging on Kimberly. It is a program where we travel around the state to different destinations and face complex policy issues, challenging situations that challenge individual assumptions. It takes a commitment away from jobs and family and other board responsibilities, all in the effort to become a better servant leader once they return home. Over the course of the five sessions, in addition to College Station, they also-- this class also traveled to Austin, El Paso, Fort Worth, and the Rio Grande Valley. There were members of this class that traveled up to 3,500 miles over the course of this, over the course of the year. They visited innovative school systems, met thought-provoking leaders, and engaged in deep, meaningful dialogue about the future of public education. And only the trustees who demonstrated full participation, a commitment to learning, and vision for public school excellence, completed the program, and Kimberly did exactly that. Tonight, with the conferring of Master Trustee title, Ms. McAdams joins a network of fewer than 1,000 trustees across Texas who have ever reached this level of professional growth in school governance. Master trustees are individuals who not only lead locally but think statewide, and these are people who see their role not as simply as a seat on a dice, but as a personal calling. So trustee Kimberly McAdams, on behalf of your fellow Leadership Tasby alumni, we welcome you into the Leadership Tasby family. We recognize your growth, we honor your commitment, and we thank you for investing the kind of effort and leadership Texas students deserve. You now carry not just the responsibility of a board member, but the voice and perspective of a master trustee. If y'all would please welcome-- join me in congratulating.
I'm not going to take much more time, but I do want to say thank you to our district for allowing me to do this. Thanks to Mr. Horak and Dr. Harkrider for both supporting me doing this effort, and again, thanks to our whole district who welcomed our whole class here. It was a wonderful growth experience, and it's just, there are so many people out there across this state who are fighting for our public schools, and that's what we were, that's what it was all about, really, in learning how to be a better board member so we can continue to have better school districts and support all our students. So again, thanks to Tasby for the recognition, but also for the program. So, thanks.
That'll bring us to C5, Staff Recognitions. Ms. Goolsbee.
Good evening, Dr. Harkrider and Board of Trustees. I have the opportunity and the honor, I have the honor of welcoming and recognizing new team members across the district in their new roles. We'll begin with our new APs that are assuming roles across the district. Mr. Hayden Bell is the new AP, one of the new APs at College Station Middle School. He comes with eight years of experience in education, and he is coming from a social studies position at A&amp;M Consolidated, where he was also a coach.
I would like to thank Mr. Ryan for giving me this opportunity. I'd like to thank Ms. Elder and the rest of the staff at A&amp;M Consolidated for helping prepare me for this. And lastly, thank my wife and children who aren't here today because it's bedtime for the littles. So we're not throwing that off. Sorry, guys.
Mrs. Lauren Cummings, she is an AP at Cypress Grove Intermediate. She comes to that role with nine years of experience in education, and she was previously serving as an English teacher at Cypress Grove Intermediate.
I just wanted to thank Piper Cameron for giving me this opportunity, and Dr. Harkrider and the rest of the district for the opportunity, as well as Jeff Mann for his work in our aspiring admin program, because that helped a ton get to where I'm at. So, thank you.
Oh, and my parents. They're kind of important, too.
Mr. Jeremy Dawkin, he is assuming a role as AP at College Station High School. He comes with 10 years of experience in education, and he previously served as a chemistry teacher at College Station High.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Wanted a big shout out to Justin Grimes over there and the team of six for all the hard work we've already put in this year. Joined by my beautiful bride, Ashley, who is going on her ninth year in the district, six years at South Knoll, and starting her third year at Greens Prairie. And yes, this will be my 10th year, all of years spent at College Station High School. Cougar pride.
Mr. David Espinosa is assuming the role of AP at Oakwood Intermediate. He comes with six years of experience in education, and he was previously serving as a history teacher at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School.
I just want to start off by thanking Rocco Grandy for allowing me this opportunity and the entire College Station ISD. Similar to what Lauren said, Jeff Mann helped prepare me a lot for this, whether it was in Teacher Leadership Academy and in Inspiring Admin. And so also Omar Spedia with my principal, last four years at AMCS, helped guide and shape me into the leader I am today. And I'm joined here by my beautiful wife Shelby and our five-month-old daughter Stella.
Mrs. Allison Gilmore, she is assuming the role of AP at College Station Middle School. She comes with 23 years of experience in education, and she's coming from Oakwood Intermediate, where she previously served as an instructional coach.
I would just like to say thank you. I'm super excited to be at CSMS. I'd like to thank my husband, he's been with me through all of it. He's the one who encouraged me to get a master's and a doctorate, and I am thankful for that. I have to say thank you to Piper and to Mr. Grandy because they also trained me and fed me and gave me lots of wisdom. And lastly, Mr. Ryan, thank you for taking a chance on me. I'm excited. Go Knights!
Last but not least, of our APs joining our new staff, Mr. Joseph Sledge, he is an AP at College Station High School. He comes to College Station High School with 18 years of experience in education. He comes to us from Bryan ISD, where he previously served as a special education teacher.
So I just want to say thank you to Mr. Grimes for an opportunity, and the school board for letting me have an opportunity to do this. Excited and just ready for a new change, so thank you very much.
One more round of applause. The AP job is very difficult, and to embark on that from the classroom or from an instructional standpoint, we appreciate your bravery, your commitment, and the kids and staff are lucky to have you, so thank you for what you do. Our last recognition is a new team member at Central Office. She is our new Community Engagement Coordinator, Mrs. Melanie Ward. She comes to us with 15 years of experience in education and community engagement. She began her career as a teacher at Forest Ridge Elementary and has served in various roles supporting the public education in the nonprofit and private sectors. She comes to CSISD from Capturing Kids' Heart in the Flippin' Group, where she served as a Leadership Development Strategist, and she is also a CONSAL grad, class of '07. She is known for her natural connections and has a track record of turning ideas into action, enhancing communication across stakeholders, and bringing energy and clarity to every initiative. Welcome, Melanie.
Welcome. Well, thank you so much, y'all. I am so excited. Obviously, we are very excited. I grew up here, was born and raised here. My mom was actually the counselor at Rock Prairie for like over 20 years, and so I was raised in the Rock Prairie office, essentially. Oh, okay, we're just gonna-- yep, we love it. Okay. But truly, you know, after high school, it's just like, oh my gosh, I could not wait to get out of my hometown, you know? Like, are you going to A&amp;M? No, I want to get out of my hometown. I want to go explore all the places. But you know what's so funny is that what I realized is, number one, there is no place like home, and number two, there is no place like College Station. I tried to run away from it, and what I realized is this is the best place. This is the best people, the best town. We have such good schools. I mean, I was raised here by chance, but I'm raising my children here by choice because it is such a good school district and it's such great people. And so I am so excited to get to just bridge the gap between the community and the school district, and I know how hard teachers work and how hard staff works. I've heard it say once that students are like the seed, and teachers and admin and all of the school staff are the water, and then the community is the sunshine. And so when all of that is together, that's when students thrive, and that's why we're all here today, is because we love kids. And so I'm just really excited to partner with you guys, and if you have ideas or anything, I'm all ears, and just super excited to plug back into CSISD in a different way now. So, thank you. Oh, and this is my family, sorry. Should have said that. So I'm sorry. This is my husband, PC. This is--
Parker.
Parker, he is a second grader, Riverbend Bear. And then, whoop, whoop, and then we have our future bear, coming maybe quicker than they want. This is-- what's, can you say your name?
Preston.
This is Preston, and he's for at Longmire Learning Center. So, okay, thank you.
All right. Welcome, everybody. That brings us to item D1, Board Reports. I know we've just started the year, so I don't know how many we have, but--
I'll go first.
Go right ahead.
We hopped right into it with our first meeting this year of Education Foundation, and I'm taking over for Kim Ege here, kind of representing for the board members, and it was a privilege. We had a few bullet points while we were at a meeting. We have four new members. There's a real electric energy in the room during our meeting. And then the other things are grant applications are open, so really encourage teachers to get out right now and apply. They're due October 1st. And then we just had our Back to School Bash. It was a huge success. We had about 350 students get served, which was great. And then lastly, make sure that you get in on the partnering campaign. It's in full swing, and you can get all that information on their website. And our theme this year is "Deep in the Heart of CSISD." And there is a really great commercial featuring yours truly, Tim Harkrider. So be sure to catch that commercial online.
Where can we find that? Our YouTube-- No, our YouTube channel is down. It's not working. Please don't try it. Nice. Any others have met? No?
I don't, but I just want to add really quickly. I, everybody else did a great job of thanking their families. I wanted to thank my mother who came here this evening. All my families at college are traveling, but my mother was a school board member also. She's there in the front row, and so definitely an inspiration, so thank you.
I know it's not on there. Safety and Security met, we meet three times a year. We can't divulge a whole lot because it's all executive-type session, but Ms. Boudreau is doing a phenomenal job making sure she and the district are up to date on all the new safety regulations and unfunded mandates, because I think that was a very popular word in the meeting, unfunded mandates that the state has put out, all in the name of security for the kids and our teachers and campuses. So appreciate everything she's doing and keep up the good work. So we're moving right along there. Brings to item E, Hearing of Citizens. During this time, we will hear from citizens who registered to speak prior to the meeting in accordance with Board Operating Procedures. The Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers regarding items not on the agenda. Comments related to items on the agenda may be discussed during deliberations on that specific agenda item. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Those needing an interpreter may have up to six minutes. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used, unused-- Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. Board asks that those addressing the board refrain from any derogatory comments. And our first speaker is Torenza Jacobs. Ms. Jacobs? No? Okay. Next is Kristin Hitt. Right there in front, yep.
Good evening, Dr. Harkrider and board members. My name is Kristin Hitt, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our small but special community, Williams Creek Lake Estates, regarding the elementary rezone proposals. I would love to share how our second-grade daughter, Cora, who attends Pebble Creek has demonstrated relentless bravery in overcoming daily battles with anxiety and who always extends kindness to others. About our first grader, Emery, who is affectionately described as the mayor of PCE and has been recommended for GT testing this year. Or how excited we are to have our youngest Monroe join her big sisters in two years. While these are deeply personal stories to me, I acknowledge the weight of the decision in front of you. I understand there are hundreds of kids just like ours that fall across the maps you have stared at for many hours. No matter which way you choose, someone will be affected. As board members, I respect that you have to separate feelings from facts and make decisions on facts alone. Pebble Creek has a population problem. Our school is over capacity and trending to have increased enrollment numbers over the next five years. Tonight, I will present several important facts to you, and I'm confident two key truths will be clear. One, that our community of 25 schoolchildren is not and will never be the contributing factor to capacity issues at Pebble Creek. And two, Williams Creek Lake Estates needs to remain zoned at Pebble Creek, not just for now, but in the future as well. The first lot at Williams Creek Lake Estates was sold in October of 2016. Our neighborhood tops out at 97 lots with no plans for expansion. Of the 97 lots, 68 have established homes. Of the 68 homes, only 15 have elementary-age children in attendance at Pebble Creek, for a total of 25 kids, a mere 22% of our neighborhood. Southern Point opened to the public in April 2019. An article titled "Demolition of Texas Speedway" states that by March 2020, less than one year after opening, Southern Point had already built 150 home sites, 53 more home sites than the entire Williams Creek Lake Estates community. And that was just Southern Point's first phase. Southern Point now has over 2,000 home sites, a number that is proudly boasted on their website. Should you apply the same 22% reflected by our own neighborhood to Southern Point, it equates to 440 elementary children, with the potential to grow exponentially in the next five years. Southern Point clearly needs their own elementary school, not just for the betterment of their community, but to provide relief to class sizes and allow for effective learning to continue at Pebble Creek. We are grateful that you are heavily weighing Proposal 6 and 7 for the elementary rezone, both of which keep our neighborhood and Southern Point at Pebble Creek. But if you are truly seeking a long-term solution to address overcrowding, I would implore you to ask yourselves, when and where did the issue of capacity at Pebble Creek truly begin? Based on the facts, it did not start with our 25 children, and it won't be resolved by moving them out now or in the future to Creekview. It is with the utmost respect and urgency that I ask the board to keep Williams Creek Lake Estates zoned at Pebble Creek and to consider the capacity implication should you keep Southern Point there, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Carly Bumball? Did I say that right? Yeah? Did I say that... Yeah, right here.
Wait, say it again.
Carly Bumball?
Yeah.
Sweet.
Good job.
Right. 17 minutes, two additional traffic lights, three more stop signs, and one extra school zone. Those would be the new obstacles our small neighborhood of Williams Creek Lake Estates would have to navigate in order to attend Creekview Elementary School in the newly proposed elementary rezoning under Plans 1 and 5. Good evening, board members. My name is Carly Bumball, and I'm here on behalf of the Williams Creek Lake Estates community to voice our support to keep our community zoned at Pebble Creek Elementary School, where our average commute time is five minutes. As a lifelong resident of College Station and a product of the school district, I take great pride in this community. I have fond memories of the dedicated teachers, attentive principals, and selfless board members who continue to strive to make College Station ISD the best possible school district for my children. When I was nine years old, because of rezoning, I was pulled away from my beloved Rock Prairie Elementary School to attend my fourth grade year at Pebble Creek Elementary. I was devastated to have to leave behind some of my very best friends, but I eventually learned to understand the impact that neighborhood schools have on a family's lifestyle. Because we were blocks away from my new school, instead of miles, I could ride my bike to school. My mother could be an active school volunteer, and I had time to participate in various UIL after-school programs. This was all made possible because the distance to my school was a short and easy route from my home. Many public schools across the state agree on the importance of having a short commute from home to school. In fact, according to the U.S. Department of Education, the average distance between an elementary school in Houston ISD is just 1.1 miles. Right now, Williams Creek Lake Estates is 2.6 miles to Pebble Creek Elementary and 5.1 miles to Creekview Elementary. With the school day starting at 7:40 a.m., this potential change would not only create a more cumbersome commute for caregivers, but it would also require an earlier-than-usual wake-up time for young children who already have a long school day. Board members, I want to clearly state that attending Creekview Elementary School is not the problem. Like I stated earlier, I have tremendous faith and support for all of our wonderful elementary schools, and I know my children would find a way to adapt and excel at any school within College Station ISD. What is the problem is a change in commute time and distance. No parent should have to pass one school to get to another school at the elementary level, where community is essential. Before passing the new boundaries, I would challenge you to think of our small Williams Creek neighborhood with fewer than 25 students. While we celebrate the potential zoning of Plans 6 and 7, where we would stay at Pebble Creek, it is not lost on us that these zoning routes are simply short-term Band-Aids that don't necessarily keep us safe for the long road. Our neighborhood is fervently requesting to remain in place as our presence will not contribute to the overpopulation concerns at Pebble Creek Elementary. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have to back up because we had so much in the front that I completely skipped over Dr. Harkrider's update. All we did was start school, so I guess you can talk about that.
Started school last week, thank you. No, I want to take just a quick minute and brag on our teachers, paras, students, administrators, and teaching and learning team. Our 24 and 25 preliminary score, star scores, were released last Friday, and it's... They do not define who we are and what we do as a school district. However, the hard work that our kids put in along with our teachers and staff deserves the celebration, and so I want to recognize some accomplishments at the campus level. Campuses have the opportunity to receive what they call a distinction. There are seven different categories, and each campus is given a comparison group of 40 other campuses across the state that look like them. Same economically disadvantaged kids, same makeup, same student group makeup, and then they're compared, 1 through 40. And to get a distinction, you have to finish in the top 10 of those 40 campuses. So in 2023, as a district, we received 21 distinctions. Our first year as a team here in '24, that number went to 37 distinctions. And in '25, that we just finished, we had 49 distinctions across our school district. And I just cannot thank our team enough. We made some changes that came with some learning curves and some growing pains, but our kids and our staff responded. They did an absolutely wonderful job. And to get you into comparison, 31% of campuses across the entire state improved on star scores from 24 to 25. 79% of the campuses in College Station ISD improved from 24 to 25. So I just want to take time to recognize our staff, our administrators in the room, the teachers. Your work does not go unnoticed. There's a reason why we're a destination district, and this type of work and productivity shows what you're capable of, what our kids are capable of. So I just want to tell you, thank you. It means a lot. And the reason why we have this amount of support, we've got great teachers, great kids who love, and now we've got great results. So, thank you.
That'll bring us to Consent Agenda. Those items are G, H1 through H4, I1, I3, J3 through J8.
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further question or comment? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. That will bring us to H5, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Regarding Policy EFB Local Library Materials. Ms. Goolsbee?
Yes, sir, good evening. We spoke last month, or the last special board meeting, about Senate Bill 13 went into effect after the 89th legislative session. And it stated that school boards may establish a SLAC committee, a School Library Advisory Council. But it does not have to unless 10% of the parents enrolled in the school district or 50 parents, whichever is fewer, petition for the formation of the SLAC. We can be in compliance of Senate Bill 13 without a SLAC committee, which allows librarians to determine collections but also provide public viewing, ensures parents' notifications of student checkouts, and now it would also require board approval on all purchases. So this is an update for EFB Local that Mrs. Hester worked collaboratively with our librarians. They gave feedback. You know, the recommendation, if we look at all our experienced librarians across our district that we honor and recognize, you know, it's something that they do take pride in every day. You know, it would be our recommendation to the board for you to approve Option 1 without a SLAC committee. This would not establish unless, again, that threshold was hit for 10% of the parents or 50 parents, whichever is fewer. So it would be the recommendation that this College Station Independent School Board approve Policy EFB Local as presented, and this is Option 1 without a SLAC committee.
A motion to approve is presented. As discussed last time, support our librarians. Don't want to slow down the timeline or give away the rights for them to purchase, acquire books. And again, we want to give books to kids that they want to check out and they want to read, and this allows them to do that. So absolutely recommend this.
I'll second.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by... Any further discussion or comments?
I would just add on to what Dr. Payne said, that this may be an important committee in some school districts. It may be an important committee in ours in the future. But as of today, it's a solution to a problem that, to the best of my knowledge, doesn't exist. And so instead of adding all these additional steps and burdens to the staff and so forth, I would, again, vote to not create the SLAC at this point.
Am I correct? We have the motion. Does it have to be read, since it's a Senate bill? Does it have to be read as recommended? Or is it okay in the way Dr. Payne presented? Are we okay on that? Yeah, we are. Okay. Listen either or, and you choose to approve the policy and don't take the action to form. Just making sure. Any other comment, question? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Bring us to item I2, Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Related to Adding a Provision to the District of Innovation DOI Plan. Ms. Goolsbee?
We spoke about this in workshop, but this is about Senate Bill 12 that goes into effect September 1. Our attorneys sent a client update on August 8. They sent it to all their clients across the state and gives us the option to actually be exempt from these new guidelines of grievances, and we can add that into our DOI plan. And so some of those... This Senate bill would allow us to stay with the current grievance process that we have within the district. Those new guidelines would provide days... Like currently, we're 15 days you can report an incident and grieve that. This new bill would give 60 days. The concern is that if we're 60 days into a concern, that evidence, that data, those investigations at the campus level, that's going to be a struggle. It also cuts out the administrative piece at the campus level. That means parents can circumvent the campus and come straight to Central Office. We know that our teachers and our administrators have the details, have the concerns, address it immediately, and it is a collaboration throughout meeting concerns from parents and fulfilling grievances to the most efficient way possible. If you look at the timeline, it also could delay parents getting their concerns and grievances heard. The current policy that we have expedites, and it does not prolong. You also have access to the administrators throughout that process. So it is a recommendation that the College Station Independent School District approve the revision to the District Innovation Plan to exempt the Senate Bill 12 grievance policy changes to local policies DG, BQ, FNG, and GF, and keep the current CSISD grievance policies in place.
I move to approve that the College Station Independent School District approve the revision to the District of Innovation Plan to exempt the Senate Bill 12 grievance policy changes to local policies DG, BQ, FNG, and GF, and keep the current CSISD grievance policies in place.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Simmons, second by Dr. Payne. Any further question or comment?
I think just something I want to reiterate for the workshop. There's more people in the room, and if there's more people watching. But I think the most important thing for me on this is that it allows parents to solve it at the lowest level, which I always encourage everyone to do. So if you can solve it in the classroom with the teacher, if you can solve it with an AP or a principal, wherever you can do, that's where I want to see issues being resolved, and we want to be able to keep them there.
Well, I agree with that, and also, this is another one that if it ain't broke, you know, don't fix it. We have processes in place that have worked for our district. And also discussed at the workshop was that we want to make sure all of our parents are aware and can easily access what they need to do to access the grievance policy. And I think, you know, we have it in many places out there. You can search it. And again, it's working, so...
Yes, ma'am. I will say some of the patterns of feedback that we've gotten throughout the grievance process also is that the community likes access to the entire board. With Senate Bill 12, it actually allows a subset of board members to hear Level 3. So it does not require all board members. And I know that that's been something that we have heard throughout the grievance process, that it is nice to have access to those that are helping serve the district.
And this may be a question that y'all don't have an answer to because it's new legislation, but is this something that later on we could vote to unexempt ourselves?
Yes, and I will say, Senate Bill 12, we have received recommendation from Region 6 and state level to wait on guidance. Senate Bill 12 is a very robust bill with many caveats. This is just one caveat of Senate Bill 12. And Region 6 has said to wait for guidance. We were supposed to get it at the end of July. It is not the end of July. But yes, sir, it's always a policy that you can take feedback if it's not efficient. But we are accessible, and we want to be able to serve our community without the grievance process. But we feel very confident in the grievance process that we currently have.
Yeah, Senate Bill 12 ended up being a bunch of bills that couldn't get across the finish line by themselves that were packaged together in one huge bill at the very end of the session.
And just to clarify, we're waiting for guidance on a lot of this legislation from the state, right?
Yes, ma'am.
From TEA.
Yes, ma'am. Typically, when that legislative session, when it happens, it passes, TEA will give you guidance. We have not received that, but school has started.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Bring us to item J1, Consider Authorizing the Superintendent to Renew Insurance Coverage for the Property and Casualty, General Liability, Auto Liability, Physical Damage, School Leaders, Underground Storage, and Crime Fidelly for the 2025-26 fiscal year. Ms. Wilson?
All right. We work with ANCO, specifically Mr. Graham, and he is here with us tonight if we have any additional questions. So we put this out to bid. I am excited to say that our property insurance went down $223,000. However, our total insurance went down $166,000. So that's our total savings for property and auto educators liability and then just your general liability. The main difference between the two, the $1,000 difference, really lies in the coverage in Travelers and Liberty Mutual. in Travelers and Liberty Mutual. Liberty Mutual has a $10, I mean, a $5 million auto liability for catastrophic, and then Travelers has a $5 million. However, Liberty Mutual has a $10,000 auto liability deductible, and Travelers is not included, so they don't have one. And we know from our accidents that when you're driving big yellow buses, you kind of swipe things every once in a while. And so we feel like we need to not have a $10,000 deductible that was provided through Liberty Mutual. So it would be the administrator's recommendation, sorry, Mr. Simak. It'd be the.
For the record, that gate never should have been there. That gate never should have been there.
It would be the administrator's recommendation to go with Travelers renewal. And then, of course, we layer our property.
Motion approved.
To accept as presented.
Got a motion by Mr. Ben.
Second.
Second by Dr. Payne. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Just that it's exciting to actually have insurance go down even a tiny bit.
Yes, $166,000 to me is huge. And then property going down to 23, they say the market has softened, but I know someone that would disagree with me. So I'm just full of it tonight. I think. I have a question. So this is a savings. We adopted our budget without the savings in there, so does that? No. I had worked with them before just to see where we were. We were anticipating a 10% deduction in property and knew that auto was going up. And so even though we didn't have definite numbers, I kind of knew where the market was and I took it into consideration, so sorry. Just so everyone understands. There's not any savings to be had in there, no.
Nice try, though. There you go. J2, Consideration and Possible Approval of the Board of Trustees for the 2025-26 school year to delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code, TEC 11.1511(c)(4), to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under TEC 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49, Subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education is authorized under TEC 49.006. This includes approval of the agreement for the purchase of attendance credits or the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit netting Chapter 48 funding. Ms. Wilson.
Okay. So you have to have this accepted by TEA before you can adopt your tax rate that we did tonight, and we did have that accepted. We have till January to actually get the contract in place, but we're going to go ahead and do that tonight and get that out of the way. So just understand a kind of little bit about what they're talking about is basically what they used to call Chapter 41, Robin Hood School Districts. We've had recapture here in College Station before. So just to kind of put it in perspective, there's two tiers worth of funding. There's your tier 2, 1, your tier 1 funding, which kind of just is your characteristics of your student makeup. Tier 2 funding is usually experience where they talk about enrichment funding. So we talked about this earlier tonight. Your tier 1 funding is basically set by TEA. It is your maximum compressed rate. That became this adopted tonight at 61, 63, and with the eight additional golden pennies that have to have a yield of 129, 52. Our current yield, based on their calculations, is 74, 77. So we're under that golden penny. We're not in, we're not in consideration for recapture when it comes to that tier 1 funding. However, if we were to take advantage of the copper pennies, we would be in recapture to TEA. And because they, this has to be adopted before we adopt our tax rate, before we do anything else. Basically, what they're doing is doing a safety net to say if we were to go get those copper pennies, that we would understand and we would have a contract in place before we did that. So that's what we're trying to do tonight. It's just something that is required by TEA so that we all understand, and then we give Dr. Harkrider authority to make a contract with TEA in case we were to go into recapture. Does that make sense? Like I said, it goes to the Balance and Act. Again, we showed this earlier tonight. We talk about recapture. It's just that the amount that spills over that cup, if we were to go into that second part of the tier 2 funding, the copper pennies, we would go into recapture. That amount would have to be sent back to TEA, and we would have to establish how that, we would do the credit netting, basically. So if everybody is in agreeance, this is the exact motion we have to make tonight.
I move that the Board of Trustees for the 2025-26 school year delegate contractual authority to obligate the school district under Texas Education Code 11.1511(c)(4) to the superintendent solely for the purpose of obligating the district under TEC 48.257 and TEC Chapter 49, Subchapters A and D, and the rules adopted by the Commissioner of Education is authorized under TEC 49.006. This includes approval of the agreement of the purchase of attendance credits or the agreement for the purchase of attendance credit netting Chapter 48 funding.
Second.
Did I get my numbers right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Motion by Dr. Payne, second by Ms. Simmons. Any further question or comment? All those in favor? All right, all those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Now it brings to adjournment. Thank you all for being here. Have a great rest of the week.